Welcome to the July 13, 2020, meeting of the Winthrop School Committee.
You're welcome.
Will be held via Zoom telephone conference. Public comment may be submitted prior to the meeting and throughout the meeting to LHoward@Winthrop.k12.ma.us. Public comment received will be read at the meeting, and if it comes in too late in the meeting, it will be read at the next meeting. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
I said.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Pledge allegiance. Mr. Matucci, could you lead us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Boncory, as always, for having me.
You're welcome.
Okay, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening?
I have none that has come by email as of yet, but I'm not sure if there's anyone on the call that has it. Jen, is there anybody raising their hand for public comment?
I do not see anybody raising their hand.
Okay, moving on. General information and recommendations, delegates and visitors. I don't see any delegates or visitors listed for this evening. Is that correct?
He's correct.
Okay, minutes of the June 15 meeting, I believe, we're reviewing. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of our June 15, 2020, meeting?
Motion to accept the minutes. Second.
Jen Powell, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? Patty, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on, we have financial and business procedures. We have warrant SVW 20-21 in the amount of $558,161.98. Can I get a motion for that warrant and that amount?
Oh, moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, seconded by, who is seconded?
Jennifer.
Jennifer Powell. Any discussion? Patty, can we get a roll call vote, please, on that?
Yes, Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on, can I get a motion for payroll warrant SPW 20-26 in the amount of $221,584.71? And there's a second one for SPW 20 lump sum, the amount of $2,722,963.20.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Capabianco. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Abstained.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Abstained. Okay, now we have a budget transfer in the amount of $489,837.11. Can I get a motion for that budget transfer, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on, we need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 level service budget in the amount of $22,242,750. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Who did that come from, Mr. Matucci?
Yeah.
Can I get a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Ms. Powell's second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes. Moving on to buildings and grounds, we have none listed for this evening. Now we're moving on to subcommittee reports, which there are none. Now we have the superintendent's report. Ms. Howard, can you please present your report?
Yes, thank you. Last week, I had sent the committee, as well as our parents, a fairly long, not detailed, in my opinion, but detailed in other people's opinions in terms of what has been happening since we received the initial guidance from the Department of Education regarding going back to school in September. Also attached to that for, we are packet, copy of the COVID core teamwork strategy, strategic plan for the reopening that is different than the strategic plan that we have for this whole school for the three years that we had developed that for. This is a totally different strategic plan that is a moving document, a working document, that changes almost daily. As you know, we've received multiple levels of guidance from the Department of Education over the past several months, including initial closure guidance, initial remote planning guidance, revised remote planning guidance, initial summer opening guidance, revised summer opening guidance, initial fall school reopening plans, and this week, frequently asked question, thoughts from the Department of Education, and we are all, and when I say we, school districts and superintendents across the Commonwealth are awaiting the final guidance for the reopening of schools in the fall. The fall is right around the corner. It's becoming more and more difficult for us to wait for the final guidance. There is work being done every minute of every day around getting our schools ready with the information we have before us. There are certain items that have, we've become stuck on because without more guidance from the Department of Education or the state, it's difficult for us to move forward when there are questions in that guidance that have been somewhat ambiguous for the communities in terms of restrictions, differences between state guidelines, CDC guidelines, and the Department of Education guidelines. The good thing is, we're in continuous communication with the commissioner. I feel like we're asking sort of the same questions every time we speak with the commissioner in a large group setting, and the answers have been pretty standard, and we will get back to you within a week with that information. So that doesn't stop the work that we are doing here. The plan that I gave you, the strategic plan for reopening that I put in your packet, is a living document that belongs to me and the COVID response team. We use this document to guide us and help us keep track of the direction that we're heading, and we add to it every day. It's up to about 13 pages long in terms of the steps that we need to take to safely reopen our schools. I would imagine when the Department of Education comes out with its next version of school reopening, which I hope it has in big letters, "Final School Opening Plan" across the front of it, I would like it to come tomorrow, if not sooner, given the timeframe we have to get all the things in place that we'll need to get in place. The document that I had provided to you does not have dates completed on it as of yet, and I will be presenting that. We work on that every day and keep track of that. We have the amount of progress and have our reopening plan completed. You will be able to see the dates of these items, as well as a few more pages of work have been done so that you can keep track of how we have been moving forward. But I did take this plan, this strategic plan, and put it into a PowerPoint presentation that I will be sharing with our policy subcommittee as a draft and posting to our website. In the information I gave you last week, we used a web page specific for the returning to school for parents and community members so that they can log on to our website and click the tab to see the updates. We will be providing more to that website in terms of updates, including a PowerPoint presentation that speaks about where we've gone and what we have done. It's called the Return to School Progress Report. Again, I'll be sharing that, a lot of that information with the subcommittee and sending a packet to the full committee. Again, another living document because we're not at the end yet. We have not finalized. We will be returning to school. I can tell you that in terms of where we are in our planning, we are a step in tow with the majority of the school districts around us. Some larger school districts that have multiple teams of people have put near return to school planning guidance out already, a little early for most of us to do that, considering the department hasn't finalized what they are expecting of us yet. So I'm assuming those plans from some of the other communities that have already put theirs out will have to revise those. But in the PowerPoint that you'll see on the website, I will outline what is being expected of us from the Department of Education. They're expecting one plan that has three separate ways to return to school for the community of Winthrop. How would we return if we were fully remote? How would that be different than the remote plan we had in the spring? What changes would we make to that? What are the differences between that plan and a plan that if we had to be fully remote would be up and running in September? They've asked us to show them a hybrid plan. A hybrid plan is different and can be different at each grade level. However, ideally, it's not really a full remote plan, it's not really a full in-person plan. It is a plan that has a little bit of both. For example, students could go to school, a third grade classroom of 24 students may be split into two sessions, so half of that class would go on week one, and the second week, they would be remote. And while they were remote, the other half of that class, the other 13 kids, would be doing in-person learning within the school setting. So we are working on both, remote plan as well as the hybrid plan. And then the third part, the third, that plan we have to submit to the Department of Education is, what if we went back fully? How would that look in the Winthrop public schools? Would we be able to, based on their guidance, be able to get all of our kids into our school, given all the guidelines of safety and social emotional well-being and transportation, safety protocols, social distancing that are in the department's guidelines? So I will outline what each one of those plans is, not what each plan looks like for Winthrop yet, because we're not done building those yet. I would love to say that those could be built relatively quickly. It is an inordinate task to build those plans. I want, also in this PowerPoint presentation, there'll be two slides on what we have done so far. I think it's important for the community and for the families to understand what has happened since the initial guidance has come out, in which they have been giving us guidance on how to go back to school. We've developed our Return to School Task Force to address all aspects of returning to school in September. We have subcommittees of those task force, which task force, subcommittees, which are, some are still being built as we build our plans and determine we need different groups. We've been asking people to help support us and get on those committees. We'll see a review, some of the things that we've also done, reviewing our remote learning parent survey that we sent out in June to help guide us in improving or expanding our remote learning. We have developed student return to school survey that will be going out to families this week. We've identified additional staff needs. We've read tons and tons of available research and articles about opening school, including CDC guidance and the American Athletic Association's recommendations. We completed and put in purchase orders for PPE, which is the protective gear that our students and staff will need, in the amount of $153,000. Where is that money coming from? COVID relief, grants that are out there related to COVID, that money is not coming out of the school's budget. Working with a human resource agency to help us make sure we are a step in tow with the legal guidelines around staff returning to school, the protocols, the policies that need to be in place. Executed a full facilities assessment. Every single classroom in all four of our schools has been gone through in terms of the class, physical size of that class, the capacity of that class, the furniture that's in that class, and furniture that may need to be purchased, the ability to social distance our kids at six feet and three feet, and how many desks can we get in a classroom, which helps us decide if we can come back fully or not. We've developed class, draft plans in collaboration with groups of teachers and administrators in terms of starting the design of hybrid, hybrid return. We are in the process of developing with our teams, our facilities teams and our safety teams, our nursing teams, protocols for cleaning, hand washing, identifying isolation spaces in schools, identifying what type of signage we will need, one-way signs, wash-your-hand signs, distancing signs, dots on the floor, stand six feet apart, stand three feet apart. We've begun the process of outlining how that will look in each school building, including outside spaces. What schedule might look like? Where can the line up outside? Will they be a staggered entrance and exit? And if so, what does that look like? Scheduled a full staff, I'm calling it a staff town meeting, July 16, in which I'll have as many staff members as would like to attend meeting, me in a Zoom meeting, in which I'll go through the whole PowerPoint with them so they have a sense of where we're at and what has been going on since they left school. Have a scheduled meeting with the Board of Health on the 17th of this week, and that's to discuss our social distancing plan. Again, there's still lots of confusion around who we're listening to. Is it the state's guidance? Is it the Department of Ed's guidance? Is it CDC's guidance? Get some, a feel from the Town Board of Health as to what their thoughts are on that process. We are in the process of engaging in conversation and work with the teachers' union around their thoughts and how they want to be included in the process moving forward, and what that may look like in terms of an MOU that would require a school committee involvement. Those are some of the things, few of the things, we've been working on in terms of the back-to-school planning. These plans are.
Please.
Yes.
Can we ask a question? What is the makeup of the Task Force Committee? I mean, is it administrators, students, principals, any parents?
Yep. So right now, the core COVID team are all the school district administrators, so principals, assistant principals, special education chair people, the curriculum director, the PPS director, and the athletic director. Then there are subcommittees, subgroups of that core group that have been built for facilities, for teaching and learning. The teaching and learning subcommittees have classroom teachers, and thereby building. So in each building, classroom teachers, principals, this week had a meeting in which they are now planning on asking for parental involvement at that level as well. So again, those subcommittees are still evolving. It's, having the final guidance from the Department of Education will really launch the final group. School committee members, Jen Powell, I have asked and had a call out, and still need to connect with Julie on some thoughts on another committee. So they're not fully staffed yet, and again, as we move along and look at the task in front of us, we decide to bring folks on. In terms of the parent input, my administrators meeting tomorrow, that was part of the discussion with the staff in their buildings this week as to how we could best use parents as part of this process. One way that we are going to use the parents is in a parent survey that will be going out, if not tonight, tomorrow, that's asking them very key questions around the returning to school. That's what grade level the students are in, but more importantly, we lay out some of the rubrics of how we may return and how that may feel for them and their input. We asked questions in the survey regarding enhancing the remote learning experience they had in the spring, how that might look now, as well as asking them again for their input around technology and support. So still being built. I hope that was a little bit.
We want to see the schools get open. I had a long discussion with Meredith today, Health Director, and there was some concern. I know you said that you were going to have a meeting with her on the 17th. I think her input's going to be really necessary to help us move forward because we're getting a few spikes due to the 4th of July, due to house parties, due to people having sleepovers, which they shouldn't be having, other children coming to their house to stay. So there is some concern about some of the young people now that are getting it, that are testing positive for COVID. So I think you really have to make sure that we're on board with Meredith, knowing where we're going forward with this, and we really got to get a message out to parents about having these large parties or allowing any in the house, or allowing strange sleepovers. Not strange sleepovers, but their friends coming over to sleepover is not a good idea.
So Meredith is part, and as well as the chief, the police chief are part of our core team. So they have, I've been probably in more communication with Chief DeLahanty and Meredith early than I have been with members of my own family over the last 17 weeks. So Meredith is part of almost every discussion and decision we make when it comes to the health and safety of our schools, from graduation to, the football team wanted to put some workouts together, they had to present a plan, they had social distancing protocols, attendance taking. I didn't just approve that, that went from the athletic director to me, to Meredith, the chief, myself, and Tara Bowie, who's our nurse leader, before there was any approval. So Meredith is a key member of that group, and she is certainly somebody that we speak to every day. I don't know where she finds the time, but she always makes the time.
Just one minute, Ms. Swope. I just want to say thank you to Lisa because she did reach out to the Board of Health here in Winthrop, and to have them every step of the way with their expert opinion has been a great bridge and a lot of good work, so I just appreciate that.
And they've been, they've been very supportive.
Ms. Swope?
Lisa, will the Commonwealth make a decision across the state and then allow the local communities to decide within those three frameworks what they're going to do? Or is one side fits all across the state?
So they have made it very clear that in-person learning, full return to school is the goal of the Department of Education, that that is what they want us to strive for, and we need to show them how we can do that, and if we can't, we have to lay out why. And that, they also, even though we may not have to go with a hybrid plan, they want to see what we would have in place for a hybrid plan, even if we don't have to use it, and the same for the remote model, what we would have in place for a remote model, even if we didn't have to use it. So their, their push is that we get all students back in school. Obviously, that is not feasible for every school district in the Commonwealth. The six-foot distancing versus the three-foot distancing is the game changer for probably 95% of the schools in the Commonwealth. If you can safely get kids in school at three-foot distancing with all the other proper protocols in place for mask-wearing and the like, you'll be very lucky. And if you can't, you know, if your own community says three-foot distancing is the minimum, but we are strongly recommending six-foot distancing, that could be a problem for schools as well.
Yeah, I mean, even Fairfax, Virginia, said they now, now serve 2,000, 200 and some thousand students in five Pentagon buildings. They'd have to have five more Pentagon buildings if it's going to be three feet, so I don't know.
Just for the initial, I could give you some initial feedback. We have looked at every single classroom and the utilization of the space, so every single classroom and extra spaces, including the gym, music rooms, cafeterias. We believe for the majority of our students, if, if three-foot distancing was the way we were going to go, the majority of our students with taking on other space in our buildings and taking rooms that weren't being used for classrooms and using them for classrooms, we believe we could get our kids in. However, kindergarten to first, kindergarten and first grade students, it's not mandatory mask-wearing mandatory, where it is mandatory, grades two through 12. So if students do not have a mask on, then they haven't met the protocol for face covering, so they would not be able to be three feet apart. So kindergarten and preschool kindergarten and first grade, the capacity in the classrooms would not allow us to bring 20 upwards of 20 students into a classroom at six feet apart. So those are all the things that we're working on, you know, adjustments and how we could potentially make them.
Can I ask a question? Sorry.
Barry?
So there's going to be some children, obviously, that aren't going to be able to return to the classroom because they either have pre-existing conditions, or they have parents or relatives with severe pre-existing conditions. Do we have to also provide remote learning for those students who are not going to be able to return to school full-time?
Yes. And so the answer to the question is yes. And after about eight weeks of questioning, how, it's expected that if all of our kids are back in school and all of our teachers are teaching full-time, how is the school district to then provide remote learning? And then also asking for parameters around what constitutes the ability not to come back to school, or how do we approve that? Is that a state approval? We still don't have the answers to that. What we have asked as a superintendent group is that the Commonwealth come up with a remote learning platform that is designed by the Department of Education and run by the Department of Education for those students, if you are back in a full or even a hybrid model, for those students who cannot return. It would be separate and distinct from the school district's remote learning plan because that remote learning plan is taught by teachers when kids are not in school full-time.
Got it.
So more guidance, we're told that is part of the final guidance that's coming out. We just have yet to see, to see that.
Thank you.
One more question. Lisa, on the agreement with teachers?
Can I just ask that you go through the chair as we go, just to be organized?
Right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Swope.
The MOU that goes to the teachers, will they be, will that be rewritten, given what we're going through, once we make a decision here?
It is my assumption that it will be. The Mass Teachers Association requested today, I think we all got an email in which they were asking the school committee to bargain the impact of the change in working conditions that may be coming before them. We have included them in our planning, which has been helpful, teachers and teachers' union president and vice president. So hopefully, we will land on a plan that's acceptable at the state level. The Department of Education and the commissioner has been working with the larger group, I believe they're called AFC, which is the overarching group of all teachers in the Commonwealth, and they have been working with them to kind of land on an agreeable thought process for the return to school. But in, in the end, in the long run, there's going to have to be something in writing that says, this is what the teachers' union agrees to because their current contract doesn't speak to any of this. So and the committee will be involved in that. Again, all of these things that need to happen, and we pretty much have 68 weeks.
Doing.
For all of that, yeah, sort of impossible. So, anyone else? I just have a couple of other items. Unrelated to the return to school plan, there is actual other school business that goes on in the summer, the stuff that I was supposed to be doing before the pandemic, that I still have to get done in order for us to come back to school at all. Reestablish residency, last year, we had. Last year, we had our incoming ninth graders reestablish residency so we could ensure that they lived in Winthrop to attend our public schools. There is no time better than now to make sure that we institute what we had planned on instituting two years ago. And we decided to take a tiered approach. And this year, we are following through in that all students that are transitioning from buildings have to reestablish residency. So all students going from second to third grade, fifth to sixth grade, and eighth to ninth grade are reestablishing their residency. They have all been notified by email and letter. And there are dates and times where they are asked to come and provide the supporting documentation to reestablish their residency. That will allow us to now go from having one checkpoint of residency, which is all we had for the past several years, going back, I'm not sure how long, to now have a pretty streamlined process of checking our kids' residency at least four times between the time you step in the door as a kindergartner to the time that you graduate. We found it, it made a big difference in total number of students in the school district last year. And we believe that it will be the same this year. It also helps straighten out our student information system with correct emails, correct addresses, any change of address. And if a student no longer lives here, they are not enrolled until they re-enroll. So that process is up and running. Athletics, MIAA still hasn't made any decisions. They're still working on their planning process for fall sports. So the Department of Education has also not taken a stand on whether or not we will have fall sports because I would imagine they're waiting for MIAA to make that decision. And we are staying on top of that. Weekly, Mr. Serino, the athletic director, attends all the MIAA planning sessions and provides input and brings back to us where they're at. And where they're at is they still have not made a decision. There are many concerns regarding athletics, including transportation and the cost impact of that. If we have to socially distance kids on buses, we could go from having one bus to a baseball game to five. Financially, that's not possible. And I think that many, many other schools are weighing in on that. So as soon as I know about athletics, I will let you know as soon as we hear. Graduation, as you know, we postponed graduation after receiving feedback from the students and families. They decided they wanted to hold out and have a, attempt to have an in-person graduation on either Miller Field or in our gym where students would all be able to attend and hopefully their families would be able to attend. The Board of Health approved. If in fact, the state had their reopening plan and we were in a phase in which that could happen, that we would be able to do that. We had a planned, in-house plan, very detailed, worked through with the police, fire, and town health department on July 23rd. The details of that plan, we chose in terms of how many people could attend, how many tickets families were getting, whether we were having dignitaries and whether teachers were going to be attending and sitting on the field. We held off on those plans for the sole purpose of not promising big and under-delivering for our students, just to add another disappointment to their list of disappointments. As of right now, as many of you know, there has been an increase in positive COVID cases in the community, which is a community spread, which is not something that we had seen. We are a week and a half away from graduation. We still plan to have graduation. However, the number of people who will be able to attend graduation and how wide that, how big that graduation is going to be is going to be dependent upon the next couple of days or week and a half in terms of the trajectory of positive cases of COVID within our community. We are in discussions with Meredith early, the Board of Health on the 17th, as well as the police chief and fire. Last thing we want to do is pull graduation away from our students. We are hoping that we don't have to do that at all. However, the size of that graduation event is going to be determined by what's happening in our community over the next few days. So another example of lots of hurrying up to wait and lots of not being able to give people who are desperately seeking details, details.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Boncorry.
Yes, I had heard some information today that fortunately, there are no members of the class of 2020 that have ever tested positive as of yet. Hopefully, it stays that way for the next week.
Great news. That's great news. Thank you for that information. There's nothing further on the superintendent's report? I'd like to move on to personnel.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have one more question from Ms. Howard. So you mentioned that the fall sports were still being worked out and taking direction from, I suppose, the state and other areas. Are we also looking at other extracurricular activities like drama and the other clubs that require, you know, planning that typically starts mid-August, that type of stuff as well?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's again, a question that we keep tossing back with the Department of Education. There's been lots of conversation around specific programs for students such as band, music, phys ed, drama, all the extracurricular, non-core academic classes that require students to physically be in each other's space. The district wants to make a local decision on that without the guidance from the Department of Education. What they're telling us, or have been telling us, but not putting in writing just yet, is that you should not be singing in a group and standing together and singing because of the transmission of the virus that is airborne and the inability to prevent that, as well as, you know, participating in drama events where students are very close contact with or without masks on. So that's another area that we are holding and held up in wait for more guidance from the department. So as you can see, all that holding up is preventing us from really moving forward with our plans. We can still plan, but we have to have 82 scenarios and sort of wait for them to close the door and say, okay, these are the final plans.
Sure.
So we have multiple plans laid out and we will grab that piece of paper when the final document comes out. And that will be communicated to our families. The plans will be at the end of July. I'm not so sure why because they still haven't finished giving us final guidance yet. Anytime you do a comprehensive plan, if you rush it, typically, it's not good. We all feel the same way in the superintendent world. Hopefully, there'll be somewhat of an extension to that. But again, it's very difficult for parents and we understand that. Very difficult for us too, not to know what's going to happen the day we open school.
Sure.
As soon as we know, we will communicate that to parents to ensure that they have time for planning. Again, the time is, you know, is it going to be a day? Is it going to be two days? It's certainly not going to be something that is going to settle well with everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have anything further for superintendent of the superintendent's report? Okay, I'm going to move on to personnel. Ms. Howard, do we have any personnel matters this evening?
Yes, we have no appointments just yet. We should have some at the next meeting for folks who had resigned at the end of the school year. We had a few positions to fill. They're still in the process of filling those. We had an additional resignation of our music teacher at the Gorman Fort Bank School. Super unfortunate because he was amazing. I think I had seen five or six of his events. And I've never seen anybody be able to keep so many little people in sync in my life and happy. But Alex Senate did a phenomenal job and gives a huge loss to the coming school. In terms of retirements, you don't believe there's a retirement in your packet. There should be for the next meeting, and I will speak to that at that point. Posting, you post the library media specialist, which is a position that NEASNC has mandated that the Winthrop Public Schools have in place in order to receive our accreditation in the fall. We have posted that position and we intend to begin the interview process for that position. How that particular individual is going to be utilized throughout the district, specific to the high school, could be beneficial to us, especially if there is more remote learning and integrated technology support that is needed in the district, not exactly what the NEASNC is hoping for in terms of how we utilize that person. However, desperate times bring on desperate measures and we will move forward accordingly. We have one leave of absence for a maternity leave. And that is, that's it for personnel.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business. You see the resolution for COVID-19 state funding? I don't know if we can read it. Should we be reading it? Yes. This is going to be going to Governor Charlie Baker, Education Secretary James Pfizer, Education Commissioner Jeffrey Riley, Senate President Karen Spilka, House Speaker Robert DeLeo, Joint Education Committee Co-Chair Jason Lewis, Joint Education Committee Co-Chair Alice Page, and Senator Boncorry. And it's worded as follows. Whereas if schools are to reopen this fall in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do so safely. It is the responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay the enormous additional staffing, transportation, and material expenses required to do this. Whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funding required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. State lines reopen with safe, responsible, equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. So can I get a motion to vote on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Capabianco. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can you call the roll to vote?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Ms. Mathews?
Yes.
Ms. Wob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Howard, if you could bring us through the Winthrop Middle School school rubric.
So these are, every year, we look at our handbook and make some decisions on changes of the handbook. I prefer this year, whoever was ready to make some of those changes to have that before you so you didn't have to take them all up at the same time. In Mr. Curling's rubric, he added, and I don't know if it is in color for you. If not, I can get it to you in color. He has made some additions to the handbook in terms of discipline, which would allow for some more specificity in each one of our grade levels and the offenses, and then the subsequent... And he believes that in expanding this and adding specificity, it will help parents better understand the detailed skill of what is discussed with students when they have a behavior that is going to require a consequence. He also believes that it will allow for some additional flexibility in what we are anticipating with some students that are going to be coming back to us with additional stress, anxiety, and pressure that they may not have had prior to COVID-19 and the disconnect from the school.
Ms. Howard, if this is accepted, will this be in the handbook, added to the handbook?
Correct. This would be added to the handbook. And I have gone through it with Mr. Curling. It was something that was put together. He had a subcommittee, including special education, general ed teachers, special ed teachers, assistant principal and principal, looking through the detail of events that they had dealt with last school year and in anticipation of what may be coming forward. And he just felt like it needed to be updated and also provide, again, some more detail for parents to help them better understand how we make choices with our students in terms of accountability.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the middle school rubric as written?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Wob, seconded by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes. Wait a minute. I was, I hadn't voted yet because I was looking at some of these and I think some of them a little too liberal on their first offenses. But I will vote yes.
Mr. Boncorry? Mr. Capabianco?
Since it's liberal, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Mathews?
Yes.
Ms. Wob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry, if you're the chair, if I may, we would be very happy to have you come down and help out any day you want on reviewing these with our students. And Mr. Curling would welcome your attending any day to help out.
Enforcing.
To be the enforcer.
Okay.
With nothing left, just potentially close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we're going to do a roll call. Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Ms. Mathews?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Perrin?
Yes.